My name is Dan Carney and it is again my privilege to be able to preside over this meeting of the Board of Trustees, Weatherford College, being held on Thursday, September the 11th, 2025, beginning at 12:30 PM in the Community Room of the Emerging Technologies and Workforce Building, 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Texas, to consider and act upon posted agenda. Participating in this meeting today will be President Todd Allen Farmer, Vice Chair Doug Dowd, Secretary Leela Morris, Dr. Trev Dixon, Dr. Robert Marlett, Mr. G.B. Bailey, and Mr. Tom Vick. I do call this meeting to order and I would ask Brent Baker, if he would, to provide us with an indication.
Yes, sir. Happy to. Thank you. Please bow with me. Lord, we are very thankful to you for today. We're thankful for this beautiful weather, this college, all of these students that have come to us. And, Lord, today, we're especially thankful for our first responders. Please watch over them, protect them as they protect us. Please be with our board as they deliberate today as well. In your name we pray. Amen.
If you'll all rise, the honor guard will at this time present the colors. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll join me now, I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all. Thank you, guys, very much. Please be seated. Quick point of personal privilege, I and several of the board members had the distinct pleasure of attending one of our most pleasurable events of the year the other night. And I wanted to congratulate and thank Brent Baker for emceeing the Scholarship Donor Dinner out at our beloved Canyon West Golf Course the other night. It was a fantastic night. Enjoyed hearing those young kids thank those donors for their gifts and their help and their encouragement. And Brent, I just wanted to say you, once again, just did a fantastic job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. I do call the meeting to order. Public comment for anyone who wanted to speak today. Ms. Worth?
Hi. No one signed up today.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Item number three on the posted agenda is the President's report. President Todd Allen Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions, employee notices, and an enrollment update. Recognizations. Congratulations to our Coyote volleyball team. After sweeping several nationally-ranked colleges and universities, they were ranked number two in Week One National Rankings. Go Coyotes! We had yet another highly successful move-in day at our dorms. A big thank you goes out to all of you who helped make such a positive first impression on both our students and their families. Thanks to you, we are off to a great start. Recognition is in order to WCT members who, due to record enrollment, created additional sections of classes, added last-minute faculty members to teach the additional classes, and dealt with cafeteria lines that ran out the door. What an amazing team. Employee notices. DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees who have resigned since the last board meeting. Terry Spencer, our police sergeant, resigned effective 9/19/25. We thank Terry for his service and wish him the very best in future endeavors. Enrollment report. We yet again have all-time record-high enrollment at Weatherford College. As of this morning, we had 7,252 students enrolled compared to 6,602 students last year and 5,344 students the year before. That represents a 9.7 year-to-date increase and an enrollment increase of an astounding 35.5% over the last two-year period. Mr. Chair, that concludes the President's report.
Thank you very much. President Farmer brings us down to item number four on the posted agenda, which is the consent agenda with financial reports. There are items A through G, which have been properly posted for the requisite time. Do I have any board member that has any question or comment or statement whatsoever about any of those before we hear a motion for approval? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda A through G as has been posted?
So I saw, but...
In a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous pass. Item number five on the posted agenda is consideration and possible action approval of TechSTAR and Logic Investment Pools as authorized investment options. Dr. Cantrell, tell us about this.
Well, we have had a very successful year, year-and-a-half-long project in passing the bond for this year. I'd like to point out some things, if it's okay with you all, about the success and the summary of it. You're very aware that you passed a parameter order on July the 10th for the passage of this bond. The maximum principal amount authorized was $110 million. Maximum true interest cross was 5.75. Through the process, we worked with different rating agencies to come up and rate our financials for this bond passage. And looking at the two top companies, the S&amp;P and the Fitch Rating, S&amp;P in July of '23 had moved our rating from A+ to a AA. And with addition of all the debt that we're bringing on, there was some concern that it might drop. S&amp;P rated us once again at AA for this bond. We, on the September 19th, I went for the pricing of the bonds to Dallas. The total bar, par amount of the bonds was $105,100,000. The bonds were incredible. The companies, our underwriters, came in and had six times the amount of coverage necessary to pass these bonds, which was unbelievable. And that's when they came in. They said the bonds were deemed index-eligible now, and this meant that the criteria to be included in major bond indices that track the municipal market. This distinction makes the bonds more attractive to investors. Total proceeds generated were over the $100 million. Final maturity of this bond will be on August the 1st of 2055. The final true interest, I mentioned earlier, we had anticipated 5.75. With all the numbers that were warning pieces of the action, I guess you'd say, it came down to 5.019%, which was... Over 45 investors put in $547 million of orders for the college's bonds. There was very strong demand to the yields being lowered on 29 out of the 30 principal maturities. There was a reduction in yields which led to a decrease of over $133,000 in debt service. Debt service was structured on a minimum coverage level of 1.3x the amount of tuition fees brought in. We were just really thrilled the day went so well. And we are about all this today that I'm bringing to you is about the investment of those funds that we should be receiving the funds next week on the 17th. And in getting ready to do so, it's time to start looking. It was very timely. I was mentioned to me last month about tech pools, different pools that we could join. And all the bond proceeds that come in fall under our Public Funds Investment Act. And previously, we had only, I had only been approved, and Dr. Farmer and myself had only been approved on a regular basis to purchase certificates of deposits. So we came back, and that's why we asked for you to amend the investment policy to include pools now. Pools are, they meet all the requirements of the PFIA. An amendment we're recommending to add pool, tech share, and logic to add flexibility, ensure liquidity at this time, at the time as we need it. I think TechSTAR is maximum of 60 days. All of the CDs were, you know, in order to be flexible, to use the money when we need it and keep it invested when not needing it. That was one reason for the pools. I went through public PFIA training this week. It just so happened I had that come up on Tuesday. And they also told us at that time that, of course, we're looking ahead, that interest rates drops. But with that said, the pools kind of lag behind the banks a lot, and you're not as apt to get the drops as quickly as you would in the other. So at this time, I have with us today, we've included a lot of information for you to review on the investment pools, the government investment pools, and also specifically the TechSTAR and the Logic. I think there were information statements included in that also. But we do have Lance Flores today from Hilltop. They were recommended by our financial advisors, and they came out and visited with us. And that's who we're recommending that we will be working with for the future in the investment of these funds. With that said, are there questions that you have specifically that I might want to let Lance answer these for you, or if I can't?
Does my banker have anything to contribute to this, Mr. Dowd?
No. I would just say that municipalities and school districts, counties, city governments use these tech pools or these types of investment pools all the time, just to pull their money. And they typically get a better yield on it than you would get at a traditional commercial bank. So they're very safe, and they give you a good return on your money, too. So I would be full support of this.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other trustee have a comment or question or bill to offer? We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being available to us. Dr. Cantrell, anything else that you feel like needs to be said?
I have nothing else at this time. It's required that we approve the investment in those authorized investments, and we have to make application as of end of the day to hurry up and get this set up so that money can start flowing in next week.
Well, I'll bet you that my vice chairman would have a motion for it today.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that the Board of Trustees approve Texas Short-Term Asset Reserve Program, known as TechSTAR Investment Pool, as an authorized investment option, and also approve the application for participation in TechSTAR. And also that the Board of Trustees approve the Local Government Investment Cooperative, known as Logic Investment Pool, as an authorized investment option, and also approve the application for participation in Logic.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second to Chairman, Vice Chairman Dowd's motion?
Second.
If with everyone in favor, please raise your hand. Pass is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Cantrell. Appreciate you very much.
One more. Number six. We also will have to set up with our, at our bank, our local bank, Prosperity. That's our depository bank, pledge bank, bank accounts...
You're ready for item six?
That's right. I'm sorry. You didn't call it. My mind was just ready to move.
Consideration and possible action authorization of bank accounts associated with consolidated fund revenues, Series 2025. Dr. Cantrell?
Okay, I'm sorry. All of our revenue bonds are, we have bank accounts set up at the Prosperity Bank, which is our depository pledge bank. And we wanted to go ahead and set those up there where we'll be making payments in. We will transfer tuition dollars in to help pay for these debt service on these. And we will also be moving money from the bond into those accounts to pay for construction here.
Okay. And is going to be a motion necessary for that?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Will you grade our papers for us, because Vice Chairman Dowd is going to put together a motion for this as well?
Okay, let's go. I make a motion that the Board authorize what the college has set up. Two bank accounts for the 2025 revenue bonds associated with the student unit building, the first being the Series 2025 Revenue Bond Project Fund, and the second being the Series 2025 Revenue Bond Interest and Security.
Okay. And that's your motion?
Yes.
And do I hear a second to the motion presented, Dr. Marlett? With everyone in favor, please raise your hand. There should be unanimous once again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Dowd as well. We are now down to the posted agenda, item number seven, the reports from Dr. Todd Allen Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As always, under Agenda Item 7A, we have our Weatherford College, Wise County, our academics and student support services updates included in your packet. Moving to Item 7B, we have a presentation for you today regarding our new student union. And I believe that we have some representatives from Huckabee with us here today. So the floor is yours. Please come on up and introduce yourself and your colleagues.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I'm Dana Victorston. I'm the senior project architect of the project. Today, we're just going to give you kind of a high-level design development phase that we just did for the student project. If anyone doesn't know where it's going, just go directly across from us. So we've spent a lot of time kind of looking at how these two buildings tie in together and kind of what this really can be as an asset for the campus. Please feel free to stop me anytime if you have questions. So just looking at a high-level site plan, and we're in the workforce building right now, which is the white building to the right. The student union will occupy the parking lot that's directly adjacent to us. And we're really utilizing the slope of the site to take advantage of some of the grades. We have multiple exits coming out at multiple levels. And then we have this really strong pedestrian connection throughout the campus. So the last time you all saw this, it was in schematic design, so it's still a little more rudimentary. We've spent a lot of time developing the floor plans and meeting all the user groups on campus to try and understand, make sure that our floor plans are really meeting the criteria of the project. So on Level One, you'll see that we have the entry sequence with bookstore and a lot of advising and financial offices that will be a real asset to people coming to the college. On Level Two, we have a full clinic, as well as veteran services, as well as a large dining space and full kitchen that will be utilized for the whole campus, as well as a loading dock that will kind of facilitate all the function of the building. On Level Three, we have a gaming mezzanine that looks over onto the student dining. So it's really a very active student space. There'll be a lot of areas that students can come in between classes or before classes or after. So it really will become the community hub for the campus. We also have a large testing center on the opposite side, which is separated a bit for sound and things like that. So the first three floors kind of make up the student services for the project. And then as we move up to the fourth floor, you'll see a lot of staff offices for the campus, as well as several community meeting rooms that will be open, you know, and for various user groups. The fifth floor hosts a large function space, as well as the boardroom and dining. And that will really be kind of the cultural hub of the project. I think these have been presented before, but just as a refresher, we're in such a beautiful part of Texas that we really want to utilize that natural stone, lots of wood, lots of landscaping, and things like that. So that was really our inspiration when we started designing the exterior and interior spaces. So you'll see, we're taking a lot of precedent from the buildings that have been on campus before and some of the projects that have recently been completed, the workforce building as well as Durant. So we're utilizing a lot of natural stone, a lot of wood, and a lot of the same brick colors that we'll mimic from workforce, since these two buildings are directly adjacent from each other. You'll see we have a large entry sequence that will really be kind of a picture moment for the, for students on campus and will really be kind of a meeting place and a real place-making statement for the campus. So here you'll see an axon, and you can see workforce kind of peeking out to the left. This will be the north side of the project, which is really more of the pedestrian side. So we have a very long kind of pedestrian boulevard that connects to the north, to all the other functions on campus. You'll see on the fifth floor, we have these kind of boxed-out spaces, which are the boardroom and the multipurpose event space, as well as the student dining comes out to grade on Level Two. And then we utilize some stairs and ramping to get down to Level One. You can see a lot of masonry, a lot of really natural materials on the project, and a lot of landscaping. This is a little bit, same area of the building, but more kind of in that user group. So we utilize a lot of tree cover, a lot of shade, as well as spaces for outdoor gathering and indoor seating. And we'll be utilizing a lot of the existing slopes on the north side of parking to minimize having to cut into that. But it'll all be refreshed and new with that parking directly adjacent to the student union. And this is really the shop on the other side of the building, right directly next to workforce. We'll make a strong connection, as well as utilize the structure to kind of make this really strong Weatherford College branding moment off front of the building. So I think some of these have been shared as well. But just like the exterior, we really thought about natural materials and things like that that will really enhance the richness of the space. We don't want it to be, to feel cold or not inviting. This is a space where we want to really encourage students to hang out and have a place to go in between classes. So we want it to be very inviting. These are just a few other inspirational images. Since the geometry of the building is so kind of rectilinear, we really want to use softer, softer shapes, softer materials to make it there. So this is the first-floor lobby, looking onto a golf simulator and up to the kind of monumental stair that will take you to the student dining, which is on Level Two. So here you see that we're really utilizing enough, as much natural light as possible. So all of these windows are north-facing, so we're able to utilize a lot of daylight and natural light without having to have clear or sunlight. And then you'll see we've incorporated a lot of plantings, wood materials, and softer seating. And this is the student dining. So as you come up that grand stair, you come into student dining. And again, lots of glass, able to look out on the beautiful landscaping to the north and that real connection to the rest of the college. And that stair on the side takes you up to gaming. And then on the far side of the image will be kind of a cafeteria area where students can get food and then come and sit. This is a shot of the third-floor gaming. So we're really listening to all the user groups and kind of incorporating all of their comments and things like that. But this will be a great hangout space. We'll have places for digital gaming, places for students to gather in their, like, user groups and clubs, and then lots of pool and board games and things like that. And then the last shot is the Level Five boardroom. So we really want this to, you know, to live up to the prestige of the college and to be a nice space for the public. So we're incorporating lots of wood elements and soft seating as well.
What's our projected date of completion?
Of completion? I hope that's not...
Fall of '27. Completion, completion projected date, fall of '27. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
I have to go back, because I had to go back and look at it. I'm in the middle of building schedule right now.
Okay.
So I do not have anything for you today. We are, we are working on it.
What's the capacity of our big dining hall area?
So right now, it's designed for about 300 students in the student dining, and then for the multipurpose is 500.
I've been...
Yes, sir.
Dr. Farmer, you have any comments or observations for?
I would just like to thank Huckabee and Associates, as well as Imperial Construction, for working so diligently to move this project forward. As those of you in the audience know, those two firms were responsible for both this building and Durant Hall. And we look forward to continuing to build on the quality legacy that you've already got in place here with these two magnificent structures. So thank you for your service and thank you for being here today.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you.
Mr. Chair, if I may move on to Agenda Item Number 7C, our service trip. We have Grant Mills and several of our volunteers, many of whom happen to also be some of our ambassadors with us today. So, Mr. Grant Mills, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. It's always an honor, and it's too good to be wrong. So good afternoon, board trustees, President Farmer, Cabinet. We appreciate the opportunity to share this. Now, I'm not presenting to you guys a new five-story building today, but I will say our project was pretty special as well. But before I share an update on our day of service, I wanted to acknowledge the significance of today's date, September 11th. Twenty-four years ago, our nation changed forever. We pause today in honor of those lives lost, the families impacted, and the countless acts of courage and service that emerged in the aftermath of that tragedy. That same spirit of selflessness and community remains alive here at Weatherford College. Service is not just something that students do on a single day, it is now a part of our culture. It's woven into the way that we live, carry ourselves, learn, and act together. So with that in mind, today, I am honored to share with you guys about the Day of Service project that Weatherford College students, faculty, and staff, and alongside the Northside Baptist Church College Ministry, we participated on July 30th in response to the central Texas flooding. Before I get going, I don't want to forget, for those who attended, would you mind standing for me? If you attended the Day of Service project, great. You guys can have a seat. Andy, you're going to stand back up for me. Andy, you know, Grant's name gets touched a lot on this topic in this day that happened. But I think Andy and I have talked about 10 times a day for two weeks straight, coordinating food, location, travel, and without Andy, I couldn't have done it. So Andy, thank you for your help. So the day of service, from 5:00 AM, literally, to 11:00 PM, Weatherford College took 114 people to San Saba. We came together to serve our neighbor. The group, once we arrived, we had to split up quite a bit, but alongside Andy and our leadership team, we made that happen. I want to, I want to hit through five key points, but I actually have a video for you guys today that we're going to show. One team, our trash pickup. If you know our friend Jeff Oaks with Love Weatherford and the city of Weatherford, he's worth a shout out today. I don't know a single person more passionate about picking up trash than Jeff Oaks. And if you've met him, he's a staple here at Weatherford now, and we appreciate his service. He participated, and actually gave him, I gave him a team of about 40 volunteers. His previous record for trash pickup in a single day were 207 bags. We left that day with 350, and so we nearly doubled his, his mark there. They cleaned the cemetery, the park, and the golf course for the city of San Saba. Our next team was a sorting and organization team. In the fellowship hall of the local Baptist church, when you walked in, it was very overwhelming. There were approximately 30 to 40 tables completely stacked and cluttered with clothing items, with water, with snacks for those that donated. And our team, about 10 volunteers, came together, and by the time we left, every table had a purpose, every shirt was in size order, they were in color order. We left it, it was, it was a new shopping spree for, for those in San Saba, thanks to our team. The chainsaw and debris work alongside Northside's special, special operations team, we allowed our students to operate chainsaws sometimes, I'm going to go ahead and admit that, but it worked out good. We all made it back and together, and we went through and we took over four trees, full-size grown trees, and repaired fences with that. I want to give a shout out to Ms. Molly Prater with Imperial Construction. So she's here for two purposes, one with Imperial for the project that we just spoke about, but also Molly was instrumental in leading our fence repair team. Molly came to me and I, when I gave her the list of projects, she chose fence repair. And I would say, we repaired a lot of the fence that day, so thank you for your help. And then we have flooring repairs. So we put, we put a skills team together, and we had a home that lost their floor. And what I mean by that is it was completely damaged up to about four feet along the wall. And our team of eight, very skilled, they went in and replaced the entire subfloor, laid new floor, and then they had already started laying tile that day by the time we left. And then our fifth debris team, we did over 150 yards of fence. And when I say we did over 150 yards of fence, I mean, they took the old posts out, they cleaned it out with a bulldozer, they restaked it, and then they did new barbed wire, all in one single day. So this work was not, was made possible not only by the dedication of our students, faculty, and staff, but also by the outpouring of generosity from the Weatherford community and our college foundation. Local supporters stepped in with donations and ensured not one volunteer had to worry about travel costs, meals, or supplies. Because of that generosity, our students were able to focus entirely on the work at hand in serving the families in need. The city manager, Scott Glazes of San Saba, shared these words following the project. "All I can say is wow. The students from Weatherford College are truly amazing. They have huge hearts that care about helping people. We're truly blessed." In summary, by the end of the day, we collected over 4.5 tons of trash, prepared over 5,000 items for distribution, and restored a critical part of our Texas community. So as we reflect on both September 11th and our recent day of service, I want to remind you that true leadership begins with service to others. Thank you for your support of these efforts and for helping us create a campus culture where service is not encouraged, but expected. Together, we're preparing students not only to succeed academically, but to leave in our community with compassion. And Melissa Butler, would you mind making a stand for me? She participated as our PR for the day. She laid some very serious ground rules to the team, and by doing so, we were able to put together content for you all that has, it's actually, Ms. Crystal, can you fact check me here, but it should be the most, the number one video in our book right now, right?
It's currently our number one most popular Facebook video.
That's awesome. So I want to share this with you all.
I just want to say thank you from everyone from Weatherford College. I'm also an alumni, and I'm a resident of San Saba, Texas. Morning, ladies. I just want to give a big shout out to all the Thai Oats for coming here to San Saba and helping us with all the flood victims. All came all the way down here, and y'all have been showing everything that we need in this community, and thank you. And go Yoids!
Your offer of assistance is greatly appreciated out here. The folks that are here, gone through this, are overwhelmed, so any help that you can give, and you generously do so, is greatly appreciated.
So we had a total of 183 homes, is that right?
Yeah.
That were affected by the flood. Some of those, a small number of 30 or 30-something were considered total loss.
Grant, don't go anywhere. You know, the presidential core values of faith, hope, and love are more than just words, and I can think of no better way than to put those words in action than what you and your team did on this service day. Would you please join me here in front of the table? Mr. Grant Mills, for your love of our fellow citizens, for your love of our community, and for your love of this great institution, it is my honor to present you with the Presidential Warpower Coin. No rattlesnakes.
My granddaughter Ashton got to participate in that day, and she still talks about the experience and being there with all those young kids, and lots of young kids that participated in that. And I can't think of a better way for Weatherford College to be represented out across the state. That's just, that's pretty doggone special. I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, she was with the Weatherford College group. I don't know of any. Grant, were there other colleges there on that day with y'all?
No, sir. And actually, I want to share with the alumni group, they actually told us, I want to, I want to take it, two weeks prior, Colby Wolf and I went down to Kerrville to do a scouting trip. We kind of went to do a plan ahead of time, and they told us, we stopped to the same side, that we were the only organization that doesn't do this full-time, you know, that people are paid to do this or volunteer. We were the first organization to reach out in unity to support them, so.
Fantastic job. Proud of you. I think we're down to Agenda Item Number Eight for announcements. Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir. The next month will be very busy. We have some of the highlights here in your packet. President Farmer mentioned our highly ranked volleyball team. They have multiple matches between now and the next time you guys meet. We have the Weatherford College Jazz Orchestra coming to the Wise County campus on September the 23rd, performing there for the students, faculty, and staff. We have our campus cookout on September 24th that Grant and Doug Jefferson, and they put that together, and you're all welcome to come enjoy that. And then on October the 7th, we have our presidential luncheon. That'll be at the Alcach Fine Arts Center, beginning at 11:45. We'll have a great barbecue lunch for you that day. President Farmer will make his annual address, and he will be giving some awards that day, and of course, we'd love to have as many of you there as possible. And then, for the first time, we are hosting an annual rodeo, the Weatherford College Lone Star Region Rodeo. That will be held in October, actually, it's October 9th through the 11th at the Parker County Sheriff's Posse Grounds. They're doing a great job putting that event together, and hope you can make it out for that. And that's all I have for this month.
Thank you, Brent.
Yes, sir.
Is the sporting place shoot this month, this year?
I think it's in November. That's the baseball booster club. Yes, sir. We'll get you that date.
Now, the question I have is about the rodeo teams. Are they progressing all right?
Excuse me? Say that again, sir?
The rodeo teams.
What about that? They haven't started their season yet. They begin...
So it does start with this rodeo?
No, sir. I think there's two or three rodeos before this one.
Okay.
And they'll begin here, I believe, in a couple of weeks, their regular season. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Brent.
Thank you.
We appreciate you very much. We're down to Agenda Item Number Nine, where we will go into a closed session regarding real property matters and employee officer matters, and we will go into closed session at 1:12 PM in the afternoon. Thank you.
Dr. Robert Marlette has a highly appropriate resolution for us to consider to be in support of, and I would ask him to present his resolution.